Thank you, Madam Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Awards and recognitions, Mr. Henson? We can go back and do the other if you need to.
Yeah. I saw Dr. Chauncey here. Did he step out, Lonell? Barry? Okay. First tonight, we're going to recognize a Hillwood High School student who's played a special role in Mayor Berry's Youth Violence Summit that her office has been hosting through several community meetings this month. We're proud to be a partner in this effort to bring the community together around such a vital issue, and we're incredibly proud of how our students have represented us during this citywide conversation. I now ask Dr. Steve Chauncey, Principal at Hillwood, to say more about this one student in particular. Dr. Chauncey?
Good evening. I'd like to take just this moment to recognize one of Hillwood's outstanding young men. One of our students has committed to help reduce the city community and youth violence. He's certainly worked very hard. De'Quan Summers here on my right, and I'm kind of pitch-hitting for Dr. Majors tonight. But De'Quan is a senior student athlete at Hillwood High School. He's a member of our business and Academy of Hospitality. He's an outstanding basketball player. We are moving on to a region tournament, and we're excited for that. And I was talking to him on the way over, and I asked him, as a senior, what some of the things that he's going to remember about Hillwood High School. And he said that it made him inspired. Well, I'll tell you as many things, the community that he's been involved in with the mayor and the police department and all the things that he's brought to our community, he inspires me. So I'm going to take off my lapel band that says "Hillwood: Be Inspirational," and I'm going to give it to De'Quan. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lonell Matthews, who's with the mayor's office and the Metro Nashville Director of Community and Neighborhoods, and he'll go a little bit more about De'Quan. Again, thank you for your time.
De'Quan is being recognized tonight because of the leadership role that he has taken during Mayor Berry's Youth Violence Summits. He was featured as a speaker during the first two events that were held at Pearl Cone High School and Rocket Town. It takes courage to stand before 400 of your peers and state, "Look at me. Do I look like I live in the projects?" The fact is that he does, but his point was that young people don't have to be victims of their circumstances and that they play a role in addressing violence in their communities and schools. De'Quan was very transparent when addressing his peers. He admitted that, like so many young people, he had made mistakes that resulted in suspension and being arrested. But he made a change, and as a result, he plans to enroll in college following graduation. On behalf of Mayor Meganberry and Dr. Tony Majors, Juvenile Court Judge Sheila Callaway and Criminal Court Clerk Howard Gentry, we recognize Mr. De'Quan Summers for his leadership and personal commitment to youth violence reduction in Nashville and for being an example that so many of our young people can follow. Let's give a hand to De'Quan.
in the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards, a nationwide program honoring students in grades five through 12 for outstanding community service activities. The awards program, now in its 21st year, is conducted by Prudential Financial in partnership with the National Association of Secondary School Principals. The Prudential Spirit of Community Awards represents the United States' largest youth recognition program, based solely on volunteer experience, volunteer service. All public and private middle and high schools in the country, as well as all Girl Scout councils, county 4-H organizations, American Red Cross chapters, YMCA's, and hands-on network affiliates were eligible to select a student or a member for a local Prudential Spirit of Community Award. These local honorees were then reviewed by an independent judging panel, which selected state honorees and distinguished finalists, based on criteria including personal initiative, effort, impact, and personal growth. Students were honored for various projects ranging from helping the homeless to raising money for a local children's hospital. Chelston Wildin, a junior at Overton, wrote, filmed, and distributed a movie called "My Reality Is Unreal," which dramatizes how bullying can lead to a child's decision to turn to suicide. Chelston, motivated to act by the suicide of an eighth-grade classmate, worked with a Tennessee legislator to pass a bill to create awareness of teenage suicide, and has been distributing DVDs to high schools and organizations for use in anti-bullying and suicide prevention programming. I'd like to invite Dr. Jill Pittman, Principal at Overton, to the podium to introduce Chelston and to tell you more about her project. Dr. Pittman?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am honored to tell you a bit more about Chelston's project, because it was not just something that was done in a snapshot in time, it's something that will have ongoing impact. So Chelston marshaled her resources and took stock of her talents. And the first among those was she knew that she loved theater arts. She is in all of the theatrical productions that we have at Overton, and when she thought about, "What's the best vehicle for me to tell my story?" She told me that she knew it had to be where she was behind the camera. So that was the inspiration and the gift that she had for the creation of a movie. The second talent that she has, that so many young people has, is marshaling social media. So she knew that if she started making connections and letting people know about her product, she could get it out there, not just locally, but her aspiration is to have it out there nationally. And then finally, the biggest motivator for her is just her sense of compassion. When I talked to her about, "Why this? Why were you motivated to do it?" She said, "I couldn't just stand by and not do anything. I had to do something to help." So every time we've talked about her work, it's always been, "I just needed to do something to help. I just needed to do something." So that compassion of the three sources of inspiration for Chelston is the one that is the most powerful, the most impactful, and the one that I have no doubt will lead her on to even bigger and better things. So coming soon to the MNPS YouTube channel, you too can watch "My Reality Is Unreal." So Chelston, I present this award to you on behalf of Prudential, the President's Volunteer Service Award.
Thanks. Congratulations.
for the Nashville Chamber of Commerce, to the podium to help us recognize the winners of the Career Exploration Fair Essay Contest. For the last several years, the Chamber has partnered with us to produce this annual event that gives our ninth-grade students the chance to meet and interact with dozens of business professionals and companies from all across Nashville. The event is connected to the Academies of Nashville, our nationally-recognized high school model that provides students the opportunity to be taught in small learning communities focused on an area of study in which they're interested. The Chamber and the event sponsor, Shoney's, are tremendous supporters of the Academies of Nashville and of this annual event. So I'll turn it over now to Rita Mack. Glad you're here.
It's good to be here. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, first of all, for allowing us the opportunity to share with you about the My Future My Way Career Exploration Fair. We had an essay contest during the career fair, and there were several students from each schools that participated, and there were two choices. And Ms. Lindsay here from Overton was one of the winners. And Nolan, who is a student at Antioch High School, unfortunately became ill today, so he's not able to be here with us, but we're certainly going to recognize him. His principal is here. Before I bring our sponsors up, our fabulous sponsors, I must say, I want to recognize someone. The career fair is a lot of work. It's a lot of coordination, it's a lot of logistics, it's a lot of management, and I would be remiss, I feel, that if I did not acknowledge Beverly Flat... Beverly, come on up. Beverly, most of you know her. She's yours. MNPS, don't take that for granted. And she does a fabulous job with the career fair, and I just want to make sure that she's acknowledged for that. Now what I'd like to do is call on our fabulous sponsors. Shoney's, Mr. David Davenpor, he's been our sponsor for five years, bringing the money so that we can make this happen and make it possible. So I am pleased to introduce to some and present to others, Mr. David Davenpor. He's going to come with some comments concerning the career fair. Give him a hand.
Thank you. Good evening, distinguished board member and ladies and gentlemen. I'm just a humble guy, trying to do the right thing, giving back to our communities. And as most of you guys know, without being presumptuous, approximately, it was about six years ago, that part of the CEO champion chambers, I was, you know, we were talking, brainstorming what we could do for our communities, and this idea was born. How about bringing all of our students to one place to really see what all the companies in Nashville do? For instance, at Shoney's, we just don't sell burgers and hot buffets and great sandwiches and so on and so on. We also have CPAs, we have legal department, legal department, we got lawyers, staff lawyers, legal secretaries, our accounting department has staff of many people, and then marketing department and purchasing department. It goes on and on and on and on, like every other company's. But when you are in sixth, seventh grades and higher, you don't know all of that. We thought would be once to bring them in, A, to educate them in that way, and furthermore, show our love to our children, to let them know we care. As your community, we care, and we would like for you to, after high school, A, go to college to become a professional. That's number one mission. If you decide not to go to college, we still love you and come work with us in every which way we want you. In opposed to having drug dealers, going to our street corner, recruiting our children when they're young, why not us recruit them when they are young and leave a positive impact on their brain at young age? So therefore, initially was just a thought process. Now, at first year, we had a couple thousand, now last year, if I'm not mistaken, we had close to 7,000 students.
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken. Yeah. So with that alone, I just want to say thanks to all of you for listening, first of all, and approving the process, because without you approving it, it would not be easy to bring all those kids through buses to that day. And it is a very, very meaningful, profound day for all of our children and our community. And I do request from all of you to continue to support that event beyond me, no matter what happens to me, continued, because it is the right thing to do for our community. Without any further ado, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for all your help. I thank you all.
Thank you, David, CEO of Shoney's. Again, let's not take it for granted. Give him a hand, y'all. He gives a lot of money. Thank you.
You want to go out here?
Yes.
Right. Come on.
Principals. Let's get the principals. Adrian and Jill.
I'll come with you. Everybody's in the picture.
If I go, you go.
Thank you, everyone. And I just want to say, and I don't know if Rita said this, about the CEO champions, which are those individuals who also support our academies within our high schools. And so this event is an excellent and natural extension of the whole academy's model, giving our freshman students an exposure to, as the CEO of Shoney's eloquently pointed out, those career opportunities that aren't always visible to us when we see brand names. We think of one thing, but there's lots that goes on behind the scenes and in the back offices to make those things happen. Right now, it's time for public participation. We've got two people who've signed up to speak to the board. Just want to remind you politely that we have three minutes. At the end of three minutes, you'll hear the bell, and we ask that you respectfully relinquish the podium to the next speaker. So we have Eric Huth, and then immediately following, we have Byron Harvey, so if you'll come to the podium and be prepared. After Mr. Huth, I'd appreciate it, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Dr. Gentry. Members of the board, Mr. Henson. I rise this evening to speak about teacher salaries, partially because one of the issues that we, those of us who served on the Superintendent's Advisory Committee discussed were salaries of the superintendent. I found it very interesting that we focused on looking at larger school districts when we were talking about the superintendent. We talked about Boston, Los Angeles, Chicago, LA, I mean, Austin, big cities like that, Denver, cities that are, that we're not always compared to here in Nashville. But when we compare teacher salaries, we've had this tradition in Nashville to really focus more regionally in the southeast at best, which, as you know, has some of the lowest salaries in the country, and to focus on districts around us. And I dare say, we probably are more comparable to, say, Austin, or Denver, or Atlanta, or Chicago, in many respects, than we are Chatham County. So I encourage you to do the same for teacher salaries. One of the issues that teachers have expressed to me over the last several months, especially those who are trapped in the no-man zone, is that they had a certain expectation when they came to Nashville, that they would achieve a certain salary level at a given year. I'll give you an example. In the 2012-13 teacher salary schedule, if we look at Step 13, a teacher would have made $50,270. If we look at the same Step 13 this year, a teacher on that step makes $48,711. So what we've done over time, while we have increased teacher salaries, we have not met their expectations. And by doing so, we have also diminished the average teacher salary in the district over time, I dare say. One other thing I would like you to consider, though, as we look into setting the budget this year and years to come, I really do encourage this board to take money that's intended for teachers' raises and give it to all teachers, instead of taking large chunks of that and farming it off to just a few select individuals who, in the case of last year, happened not to be in the classroom, for the most part, a few of them were. But I think it's important that we get teachers the salaries that they're expecting.
Thank you, Mr. Huth. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. To Dr. Gentry and this distinguished board, I come before you on behalf of the Criminal Justice Task Force of NOAA. NOAA, as you know, represents Nashville, organized for action and hope. We simply can't thank you all enough for the good work you do for our students and our schools. As you know, the Criminal Justice Task Force of NOAA proposed to the school board the formation of a school board committee composed of school and community stakeholders who would develop recommendations for district goals and policies to reduce the racial disparities in school suspensions and expulsions. The committee would complement what has already been started by the PASSAGE program. We express our gratitude to you, Dr. Gentry, for the commitment made to leaders of our task force to form the Community Engagement Equity and School Discipline Committee based on our proposal. On Thursday, February 25th, we will be housing a public meeting with members of the school board, and we'll be asking you to respond to the following questions. Will you support the newly-formed Equity and School Discipline Committee in its work to reduce the overall number of students suspended and expelled? Number two, will you support the newly-formed committee in its work to reduce the racial disparities in school discipline? And number three, when hiring the next director of schools, will you advocate for a candidate who is qualified to address these issues concerning equity in school discipline? We want to thank those members of the board who plan to attend the public meeting, and we are prepared to make these, who are prepared to make these three commitments. We ask any board member who cannot participate in the event to provide your responses before Thursday, so that we can accurately communicate your stance to those members of the public who will be present. And so we cordially invite you and this audience to this meeting. It will be Thursday evening, February 25th, at 6:30 PM at First Baptist Church, South Inglewood, and it's called "United Against School-to-Prison Pipeline: Equity in School Discipline." Thank you very much.
Consent agenda, Ms. Shepard.
The consent agenda is as follows. One, A, approval of minutes from 10:13, 2015 regular meeting. B, recommended award of contract for architectural services for library renovations at Harris-Helman School and J.T. Moore Middle Prep Street Dixon Rick Architecture, PLC. C, recommend approval of supplement number one for Rosebank Elementary School Renovations, Centric Architecture, Inc. D, recommend approval of supplement number two for Southeast Early Learning Center, Allard Ward Architects. E, recommend approval of supplement number one for Stratford-Stem Magnet School Renovations, SSOE Group. F, recommended approval of change order number two for Waverly-Belmont Elementary School additions and renovations, Orion Building Corporation. G, recommend approval of revised change order number five for Stratford-Stem Magnet School renovations, Mesa Construction Company. H, recommend approval of request number 11 for purchase of furniture, Ruby Major Elementary School additions, GBI. I, recommend approval of request number 12 for purchase of furniture, Glencliff Elementary School additions, GBI. J, recommend approval of request number 13 for purchase of furniture, Glenview Elementary School additions, GBI. K, recommend approval of request number 14 for purchase of furniture, Southeast Early Learning Center, GBI. L, awarding of purchases and contracts. One, ACT, Inc. Two, Apple, Inc. Three, Bobcat of Nashville. Four, Dell Marketing. Three, requisitions. Five, Five Stones Research Corporations. Six, Kendall Stage Curtains. Seven, Metro Transit Authority, MTA. Eight, NES. Nine, Newly Cobble Company. Ten, New Teacher Center. Eleven, Strategy and Leadership, LLC. Twelve, the Curb Event Center, Belmont University. Thirteen, Williams Restoration and Waterproofing, Inc. Fourteen, U.S. Community Credit Union. M, compulsory attendance waiver. And N, acceptance of litigation release, special education. I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay.
All approved. Any opposed?
For tonight's director's report, staff from Student Support Services will provide an update on Community Achieves and the district's wraparound services model. Dr. Tony Majors was planning to give this presentation himself at the February 9th board meeting, which, as you know, was canceled due to weather. Dr. Majors and Dr. Vanessa Garcia are both out of town this evening for a national castle conference, which, as most of you may know, is the organization that supports our work around social and emotional learning. So in Dr. Majors' absence, Alvin Jones, our Executive Director of Cluster Support, and our Community Achieves Coordinator, Allison MacArthur, will be presenting, along with a couple of special guests who they'll introduce. So I'll turn it over to Alvin to get us started. And we're going to, I think, use the large screens, because some of these slides are difficult to see.
On behalf of Dr. Majors and the entire Student Services and Support Services Department, I want to take time to thank you for the opportunity to share some of the good things that's coming out of our department. If you would look at your, on your packet, the first sheet that you have here is kind of a summary of some of the stuff that's happening, some of the items that we've got going on. And what I'd like to do is to go back and take some of those items and present them in some additional slides and look at the summary. If you look at this slide, you'll go back and you can see that we present our interventions in tier levels. The Tier One level is for school-wide intervention, and this includes things like going back, our family involvement specialists, if you'll notice, have had over 3,023 individual teachers where they have provided staff development for us to go back and help them with engaging parents in the community. The behavior analysts have gone back and provided over 2,860 trainings that have included staffs and individual consultations with teachers to help them in dealing with behavior with students. In the lower part of the slide, if you'll notice, you'll see that the behavior specialists have also, in the Tier Two and Three interventions, have gone back and provided 360 individual cases where they are working with students on their individual needs. And that's at a ratio of one behavior specialist per 30 students, and we have a cap on that because of the amount of time that that takes. Our social workers have provided interventions to 5,632 students, and these interventions have varied from group counseling to individual counseling, to wraparound services such as providing clothing, or helping them get housing, or helping them get health services, and all the varied needs of our students in our community. In the last part of that slide, you will see that we have attendance interventions. These are provided by our truancy intervention specialist. They have provided interventions to over 17,000 students this year, and these interventions are everything from sending out mailings to them, notifying the parents that their children are truant, to phone calls, to home visits, to... it allows parents to be more, participate more in their child's education. On the next slide, you'll see that our Family Involvement Specialists have provided a hundred and fourteen, secured a hundred and fourteen partnerships in the community. And these have been ongoing partnerships that have lasted throughout the year. The second figure there is a hundred and fifty-six individual events that they have secured partners for this year. Parents have received one hundred and forty-seven different workshops or parent events, and there's been a total of three thousand one hundred and twenty-seven parents that have been involved in these efforts this year. At this time, I'd like to ask Allison MacArthur to come up, and she will present the Community Achieves information.
Good evening. So I am going to just give you an update. Lots of information, I'll have to move quickly. And it's pretty much first semester. We pulled some stuff, it's not quite year-to-date, because we'd pulled some stuff at the semester in some, in January. So just a reminder of the schools where we're working with this year. I've got the two thousand fourteen, fifteen schools, and then the schools that we added this year. We're working with twenty-three individuals in those schools. Schools that also have a family resource center, I've highlighted in green. I also want to take a minute, before I get into all of my slides and all of the things that are going on, it would not be possible without the Community Chief Site Managers that y'all funded last year, and our FRC Managers. So some of them are in the audience tonight, I would love for them just to stand, so you can see them. I've also got some partners here, I'll talk about that. So some of the people are not here tonight, because this information changes daily. So there are some events going on at schools tonight. I've got one person that's meeting with the Sounds, they're going to put in a playground at Buena Vista. I've got Tusculum has a fast night, Family Academic Success Team. So there are things going on all across the city. So my site managers stood, but I also have some partners here that I wanted to recognize. I know Emily Norris is here from Family and Children's, and Angie Adams is here from Pencil, the new CEO from Pencil. I'd love to recognize them for a minute and thank them for their support. So of our schools, just a reminder, we've got six elementary, nine middle, and five high schools. Right now, we're in ten of twelve clusters. One thing that we do with our schools, I've also included a list of schools that have expressed interest in joining Community Achieves next year, just to put that on your radar. One part of us supporting our schools is with professional development. And one thing that's coming up in April is the Coalition for Community Schools, the National Forum. And so we are taking individuals from all of our schools, all twenty schools, we're taking all of the Community Chief Site Managers, all of the Family Resource Center Managers, most principals are going, some partners are going, Dr. Majors is going, Dr. Garcia's going, I think. Ms. Bering, are you going with us? Ms. Bering, are you going with us to Albuquerque?
Yes.
Okay, good. I don't know if anyone else is going, we would love for, are you going too? Okay, good. So looking forward to that great opportunity to learn from communities all across the country that are doing this work. I was hesitant to put the next slide up, but we have so many partners doing this work, and you're going to see that in the numbers that I reflect. So there's no way I could put them all on the slide. But a lot of the partners that you see on this slide, they are working in multiple schools and really supporting the community school strategy. So I hated not to recognize some, but just know that it is only a small portion of the partners that are doing work in our schools. So you all have this information in your packet, and I know it's a little hard to see, I'm going to explain what you're looking at. Now, in your packet, I've actually, I put a smaller graph, so you can compare this year and last year. Now, what you're comparing, our last-year numbers are for the whole year, but this-year numbers are for pretty much the first semester, even though you're going to see an increase in all of them. So the blue number shows events and programs that happen as needed or ongoing. So some of those examples might be, a lot of our schools have reestablished their PTO or PTA, so that would kind of be an as-needed, and yet it's ongoing, too. Maybe various parent groups would be as-needed or ongoing. What you see in red, those are the events. So it's a one-time event that the school has. It could be muffins for moms, or a grandparent breakfast. It could be an open house. It could be a student showcase. It could be a health fair. So that would be an event. And then what you see in, on your handout, it's green, but on the screen, it's yellow. And so those are programs that match student cohorts. And so that has to be a partner or an organization that works with a group of students. They have to meet more than nine times and more than once a month. And so we take that information, we put it in our student management system, and so we can track attendance, grades, discipline, and test scores for students that are in that cohort group. So that's what you're going to see in multiple areas. So the first screen that you see here is family engagement, because we have four pillars of Community Achieves, family engagement being one of those. I'm just going to say that overall, we've had an increase, an increase, I don't have the total increase. So in as-needed, we increased by twenty-six events. Events, we increased by seventeen, and cohorts, we increased by ten. The rest of the time, I'm going to give you total increases. And that is just, we've increased already, even though we're looking at last year's total numbers and what we've got going on. Again, it all goes back to our site managers in the school doing the programming. College and career readiness, again, it's broken down by our as-needed events and programming for student cohorts. We've had a total increase in programming in this area of a hundred and thirty-seven, either events or programs. Some of those examples might be college week, it could be tutoring, volunteer supporting our reading clinics. Health and wellness, another pillar of Community Achieves. We've had a total increase in programming cohorts and events of a hundred and twenty-one, with our largest increase being in the cohort area. And so what some of this looks like at the school level, it could be a health fair. A lot of our schools will host health fairs that's open to the community and to students. It could be a nutrition workshop. A lot of work around school gardens falls under this area. Also mentoring, that's a big, we've seen a big increase in students, in schools asking for mentoring, and I think that's probably why our largest increase is in the cohort group area, where we're adding mentors to our schools. Social services, so this is our food pantries, our clothing closets, crisis response, school supply drives, financial literacy class, this is also, our adult development falls under here. We've had a school that has added GED this year for their parents, and so we've had a total increase here of a hundred and forty-four. I was with one of my site managers this week, and I heard her say they give out a hundred and nineteen items of clothing a month. This is just partner counts. It's a, you know, it's an indicator, it's not necessarily an outcome, but it is something that we look at. So you can see that, to date, and again, this changes every day, in fourteen fifteen, we had three hundred and eighteen partners working in our Community Chief Schools, and to date, we have five hundred and five. And this is really for a lot of reasons. One, there's a designated person there to manage them. They do some recruiting, but you know, we have a lot of things in place where partners are already recruited. Pencil, they bring partners in, you saw our slide earlier from our Family Involvement Specialist. So there's a designated person there to manage them and be that contact, so that's also important. They've also been able to reengage maybe some of those relationships. A lot of times when there's turnover at the school or turnover at the business, we lose some of those relationships, so they've been able to reengage some of those relationships. So the next thing that I'm going to show is kind of what does it look like at the school level? So there are some other packets kind of scattered around, and what I did, I didn't give everybody each a copy, but what's in each stack, I wanted you to see an elementary school, a middle school, and a high school. So I've got Buena Vista, Jerry Baxter, and Pearl Cone. So what you see there is just the programming, the events, the cohorts, all organized by pillar. So in the yellow area, that's our parent engagement, and it's also divided by what MMPS offers. A lot of support services, we offer a lot of things in these areas. And then what outside partners supply to the school. The next area is college and career readiness, health and wellness, and social services. It's also divided by quarter, so you can see if things are ongoing, or if it's just a one-time event. You can see things that are planned in the summer. I love the little people at the end of the lines, that represents a cohort group. So that is someone that's working with a group of students. So what I have on my screen, this is the Pearl Cone example from this year, so in each packet that you have, the very top sheet shows this year. The second slide will show last year. So you should be able to visually see an increase in what's going on. And again, a lot of that is because there's someone there to capture and kind of align everything that's going on. That's been a really, really important part, is to capture everything that's going on, align it, and fill some of those gaps. The next page that you have is just an inventory, and it's just another way to look. So we use this inventory sheet to build what we call our collective impact graph. So it's just another way to look. You'll notice, so you know, as you glance down, whichever packet you're looking in, whether it's Buena Vista's, Jerry Baxter's, or Pearl Cone's, as you glance down, you're going to see lots of different partner names, and then you might see school or MMPS, and that's because we're able to provide a lot of programming and services, but we can't do it alone. And so what we're trying to do is align with our partners, so that we can serve more students and families. I'm going to ask Emily to come up, Emily Norris from Family and Children's. This is where she's going to kind of share how Community Achieves has impacted the work at Family and Children's, before I go on through the rest of the packet.
Thank you, Allison. Thank you, members of the board, for allowing me to speak before you today. I'm Emily Norris, and I'm the Program Director for Community-Based Services at Family and Children's Service. One of my roles there is to oversee the Family Resource Center Directors. We have Family Resource Centers at Cole Elementary, Fall Hamilton Elementary, Napier, Park Avenue Elementary, and Pearl Cone High School. I wanted to tell you a little bit about some of the work that we've been doing with Community Achieves. Having Community Achieves in the schools in which we work helps us to do our jobs better. We are currently collaborating with Community Achieves on several initiatives. We are currently working with them on a coordinated response to dealing with parents and students impacted by the trauma they experience related to the shootings at Pearl Cone and Napier. We are working with Community Achieves and looking at developing food security programs at the schools during the summer. With the coordinated help of Community Achieves alongside with our FRC Directors, we were able to provide thousands of emergency food boxes during the snow days that happened this month. We are currently working with Community Achieves to capture data that we can all use to show the real impact that we are making in the lives of students and families at the schools. And I can explain a little bit more about that. So we've been doing work within the schools for quite some time, and now, with the help of Community Achieves, we're actually able to track data in a different way, so that we can kind of follow students and see that when we provide services like food boxes and clothing and parent groups and support to the parents to bring them into the school building, that it's actually making a real change in the lives of the students. Our work at the Family Resource Centers is about providing real help to real people where they are. We are grateful to be working within the schools, so that we can provide the help that people need, rather than asking them to come to our space. We believe firmly that we will go to where people are who are in needs of support. Without the school system and without Community Achieves working alongside us, we would not be able to provide those services. We believe that the Community Achieves model of creating a space where families feel welcome and empowered to be part of the holistic education of their students is invaluable. Thank you for allowing me to speak to your board meeting today. Thank you.
Thanks, Emily. So a couple of things that are still included in your packet. Just briefly, this is a tracking document that we have to show, it's hard to see on the screen, it's in your packet. But we want to track the food, clothing, supplies, toiletries, household items, conferences that teachers have with parents, referrals where we refer out to outside agencies, partner meetings. There are some magical things happening in our schools when they bring all of those partners together, and they collaborate with each other, and just come up with really ways for them to serve more students and families. It's really been magical. So those are the things that we're tracking, we have an online system for those. You'll notice in your examples that schools look very different. Pearl Cone has a Family Resource Center and a Community Chiefs person onsite, they've been doing this work a long time, so I don't want you to think, oh, are the other schools slacking. Buena Vista has been a part of Community Chiefs from the very beginning, but not until this year did they have that one-hundred percent person all full-time doing the work, and so it's made a real difference. And then Jerry Baxter just joined this year. So you'll notice those differences as you look at that information. We also wanted you to hear from a principal. So I've got Darren Kennedy from McKissick Middle, and this is his information on the screen. I think, I heard he had a phenomenal VIP tour, was that last week?
Good evening. I was asked to speak to you about Community Achieves and the impact it has on an executive principal and the school culture and climate. Last year was not, we did not get a Community Chiefs Site Manager, so we had other staff in the building to take on that role beyond their natural job scope. So this year, we did have, we did receive the Community Chiefs Site Manager, Mr. Patrick Walker Reese, who's doing a phenomenal job. The benefits really is including him on the school improvement team, on the leadership team, on the school-wide incentive program. He's included in everything that we do. He also has a history of the school, of the school's data, the school's needs, the school's wants, and the school's ask. And so what he's, what he has been able to do for McKissick is to align all of the resources, so that we are moving in the right direction. And we have three areas when we look to bring on new business partners and community partners, and that is to increase student attendance, decrease student discipline, and increase attendance and grades. And so those areas, we look to build and build on partnerships every single time we have a community person come onboard. In turn, this year, we've had some phenomenal support and some phenomenal wins in our data. Last year, we suspended forty-three students a month. This year, we are averaging nine suspensions a month, and that is all because of the alignment of the whole child. Our initiative this year, our hashtag, this year's Whole Child, Whole School, as we know, children have a plethora of hindrances before they even walk into the school building. So the Community Chiefs Site Manager has done a wonderful job of combating those for the executive principal. It allows me to be more of an instructional leader, and in turn, we have seen phenomenal wins within our fifth-grade data and our sixth-grade data as far as benchmark assessments and the continuous improvement model. So thank you for inviting me to speak. It's a wonderful position to have, and it takes a load off of the principal's shoulders. So thank you.
I think Alvin Jones is going to come back up and close this out, and then we're available for questions, if you have any.
Okay, the question would be, what are the next steps in our department? You know, what do we see as our vision? And one of those things will be for us to go through and start working through our cluster support teams to align social, emotional learning and RTI in our district. We also want to work with and develop a stronger connection between our social workers and our guidance, our school counselors, as far as going back and trying to meet the needs of kids within the school. We also want to go back and take and continue to use our data collection and analysis to support PASSAGE. PASSAGE, we've made a real strong start with PASSAGE. You know, I heard a while ago, you know, he made the comment about the work in PASSAGE and the encouragement there. We also want to work with and develop a stronger connection between our social workers and our guidance, our school counselors, as far as going back and trying to meet the needs of kids within the school. We also want to go back and take and continue to use our data collection and analysis to support passage. Passage, we've made a real strong start with passage. You know, I heard a while ago, you know, he made the comment about the work in passage and the encouragement there. We have really made some really good strides with that, and it's something for us to be proud of. When we come back down, we want to use professional development in our district to come back and encourage and promote a restorative culture in our district. And so we also want to make sure that our staff members are aware of adverse childhood experiences, ACE indicators. We have, a lot of our folks don't understand the impact that these ACE indicators have on the success of the child. And, you know, we want to come back and expand services in the area of mental health through our collaboration and work with mental health agencies in the community. And we want to go back and expand our efforts and our participation and support of citywide efforts to address youth violence. And that is a strong, you know, something that Dr. Majors feels strongly about also. And at this time, what I'd like to do is ask Lonell Matthews if he would come up and speak to that citywide initiative.
Yes. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I would like to just address Community Achieves and talk about my, both my experience as a former councilperson when Community Achieves was initiated. Just knowing that your primary goal at Metro Schools is to educate our children, the wraparound services that our children receive that help to break down barriers that they may face that may prevent them from getting the quality of education that they deserve is very important. And Community Achieves is just a great opportunity for both the school system and the city to be able to partner in providing services that can break down those barriers for our students. The youth violence reduction work that Mayor Berry has committed to is just one example of that, because when we convened 400 students at Rocket Town, those students spoke back to us, and they said that there are certain services that they need, that they're not receiving right now, that they don't have access to, either because Nashville does not have the greatest transportation system. We're working on that and trying to improve it. Or they just don't know about resources that are available. They don't have the exposure because of where they may currently live, or the exposure that their parents have may be limited also. And so to be able to wrap the family, wrap the family with the provided and needed services is very necessary. And there are other initiatives that are priorities for Mayor Berry, such as mental health, such as community beautification, and providing social infrastructure for disadvantaged and vulnerable families, that just gives us a great opportunity. If we build Community Achieves out to scale is one thing, but we have to make sure that it's impactful and that it's making a difference in the lives of the students and the families that we're serving. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the time tonight. Are there any questions that we can answer for you?
Ms. Prog?
I have a few, actually. I'm just thrilled about that we are expanding this program. I think this is...
What is so desperately, sorry, so desperately needed at many of our schools? So I guess my first question is how we select the schools that participate in the program? So up until this point, it was really principals coming to us saying they want to be a part of it. But we feel like moving forward, we need to get with LNL, we need to have a committee. Look, let's look where we are, let's look at the schools that have expressed interest, let's look at need, and be really strategic in where we go. And I welcome your input on that. Okay. I'm also interested in the training that the, is it onsite managers, as we call them, that they receive? What type of professional development? So we have worked on facilitating partner meetings. They had to do a lot of learning about school stuff. You know, they're not all school people. A lot of them have social work backgrounds. So I think one of the first things I gave them was about four pages of acronyms. So they've been trained on school improvement plan, on data warehouse, on our student management system, on family engagement strategies, use of school data. We're together on a regular basis. I've got a whole list if you'd like that information. And what, one thing that's been really neat, so we get together as support services about once a month, our whole department. And then, so we had six days planned for the year, and so our, my people said, hey, we want more, this is not enough. And then they've also asked for some individual coaching, so we go out to the schools individually. It's, we're not there enough, I'll be honest, just because it's me. And there's a lot of them, there's 23 of them. So I've got a couple more, I'm sorry. Okay, no, go ahead. So on the healthcare aspect, I know we're partnering with Well Child. Is that something that's being offered in every school? It is. So through our department, there are screenings at every other, every other grade level. So there are dental sealants, and then there are Well Child screenings. And I don't know all the details. I'll be honest, I don't think it's enough. It's a lot, when, you know, you look at our budget and we pay for it. We lost those six school-based clinics. When we first started Community Achieves, we had school-based clinics, six throughout. I would love for us to get those back. We've had conversations. I would love for the mayor's office to help with that. I mean, really, as a community, I was at Glencliff High School when we had it, and so it was open to the community and to the students. And it was so beneficial. You know, we didn't send students home, we sent them to the clinic, and a lot of times they went back to class. And so I really hope as a city, it's not something that MMPS can solve on its own. But as you, if, when you go to Albuquerque, you're going to see around the country, people are doing it. And I just have a hard time believing that we can't do it in Nashville. Okay, final question is, I'm kind of wondering about what, it was unclear to me, which of these programs were taking place during the day and which are taking place after school, and how much, I guess the schools are fully autonomous in how they implement the program. I guess the partners are sort of, I think there's a lot of creativity that comes of different groups, you know, out of different groups coming together and coming with ideas. But I'm wondering, what, one of the big needs that I have noted in a lot of the schools is a need for activities after school. And so I think I saw NAS up there and some other, what kind of programs are available, like enrichment, art, music, and gardens? Yeah, a lot of them have. I'm trying to think if it shows maybe at the bottom, if it shows what's before and after school. Right now, the majority of things are happening during the day. There are, you know, various after-school programs. I'm going to look to see if it's on that graph, looking to build that. We have a new director of before and after school, and so we've had some conversations about how we could be creative, and she's wanting to kind of think outside the box. And so I've said, hey, my schools are thinking outside the box. When you have something you want to try, this is where we need to do it, and look at this, you know, what the schools are proposing. So definitely looking to expand in those areas. I was looking to see if this showed what was going on after school. We can definitely think about showing that. I feel like we show it at some point, but I don't think it showed here. We definitely show summer. I'm sorry, so if a school were to say, we have decided we want these types of programs, they would bring a proposal to you and you would approve it? Is that how it works, or? It works a lot of different ways. So a lot of them, if that's what they're wanting to do, they'll ask their partners. So a lot of them now are doing things on Saturday. Cole's got a big event this Saturday where they're signing families up, working through our EL department, which is really good for us to align within the department, and then they're asking outside people to come in. So a lot of times, it just depends on what the school wants. You know, are they looking, not all of them want to expand after school, but if those that do, they'll ask their partners, hey, we're looking to expand after school. And then we support that. Every school does a needs assessment, and so on Alignment Nashville's website, if you look under invitation to participate, Community Achieves, you can see the needs assessments, what's been completed for all schools, and you can look to see what they're asking for. And so they'll kind of say, here's the data that supports what we need, and this is what we're asking for. And so they'll put those asks on there, we're looking to expand things after school. That's one thing that Buena Vista did, they expanded some programs after school this year. Thank you. Ms. Pierce?
Thank you, and I had the privilege of being at McKissick last Wednesday, and I got to meet Principal Kennedy and his Community Achieves site coordinator that just got glowing reviews from him and everybody there who works with him. So thank you for this. I do have some questions, and it may be something that comes in follow-ups. I know that you have the four buckets, kind of social services, health and wellness, college and career, family engagement, but is, does Community Achieves have a very clearly stated mission, mission statement, and purpose?
We, so we, we have a mission statement. I can't quote it, so, you know, what does that tell you? But at the end of last year, when we were together, we have an oversight committee that kind of helped shape our outcomes, what we were going to track. And so from the very beginning, before we ever started, that's what we started with. What are we going to track data around? So last year, at the end of the year, when we had our oversight committee together, they looked at our collective impact graphics, and they said, wow, y'all, y'all've really done a lot of work. It's kind of like they were surprised. And so Ralph Schultz said, you know, you really need some help branding. And so the chamber actually this year paid for a company to work on our branding, and so we're kind of in the process of doing that now.
So to really figure out your purpose and goal, I mean, my questions are around just what is the intended goal? And so, you know, there's, you're doing a great job of capturing that data of the inputs, but is how, how do we then move that another step and really track the outputs and whether those various things are successful or effective? And that kind of leads me into seeing Principal Kennedy back there, may, see if he could answer this question. Of the data reports that you have and you provide the principals, you know, are there some that are more effective than others? And are they flexible in the sense where, say, mid-year, you're finding that your attendance goals, you know, either you're way over shooting and it's great, and you can maybe dive into some other areas a little more deeply, or are there areas that if you're not on track, you can double down based on the reports that you're being, you're providing him?
So he doesn't, he doesn't necessarily get the reports. They can get, now, their site managers can pull information on programs, that's in data warehouse and program manager. But one thing that they can do, anytime they say any change, they can update their needs and ask. And so they've done that periodically. I just got an email today where one school said, hey, we see a need for this. One example is Napier. In the, at the middle of the year, they said, they came together as a faculty and said, what do we really need? We need some hands in the classroom with the teachers. So they put that out to all of their partners, and then they updated that on their needs, we call it the needs and ask statement, so that they could, we could then help them recruit with that.
Okay. I mean, is there going to be a move that the principals are, I mean, I know it's been a great load off that you can focus on the instruction, but kind of tying all that in together, I would think that that might be a good thing to link together, is the principal knowing what the data is showing for his school?
I think the data that they look at is probably, you know, they can see their attendance data, they're looking at that all the time, their academic data, looking at that all the time. And so they share that with their partners. Here are the things that we're trying to reach, like he talked about with discipline.
Right. Okay, well, as far as like the social-emotional piece, do you all feel like right now that you have the right gauges to measure the effectiveness?
Social services.
Social-emotional, kind of that social-emotional piece, or the well-being, I guess, of the kids?
So what we had to look at, when we looked at our, we have 20 outcomes, and so families are able to support students in learning, I can't quote all the outcomes, there's a couple under family engagement, but a lot of our college and career goals would be the same goals, you know, students reading at grade level, it would be the same goals that Leadership and Learning has. We don't want to not support what they're doing, and at the end of the day, it is about academics. Health and wellness, that would be where our students are physically capable to interparticipate in school. I know that that's the goal. And some of the social-emotional things come in there. And we have to put discipline data under there. And a lot of it's just, what did we have access to track?
Okay. And then just a couple more questions. As far as like the differentiated costs, are you all seeing, you know, cost differences between serving a high school versus an elementary versus middle? No?
Not yet.
Okay. And then I didn't know if the, for the future and the expansion, is this most likely going to be something that does stay housed at central office, or are there, are there student-based budgeting dollars going straight out to the schools for these services?
So that's one thing that I asked Dr. Majors about today. So the, right now, there's very little here. All, even though the budget falls under Community Achieves, those people are in the schools and the principal evaluates them. And they ask, that's what they wanted, but it doesn't have to come out of his budget. So it's, it's out of my budget, but it goes to him.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So to speak more specific to social-emotional learning and the LNL support along with the support services side, and so to marry the two, there is specific data. When you talk about a school looking at year one, which was my first year as an executive principal going into year two, you do see fights are down, arrests are down, we do have morning meetings in the morning, and so that is our SEL component. And so making sure that our community members are involved in knowing the data, knowing the attendance data, looking at the academic data, and so the Community Achieves site manager does a great job of aligning all the resources and looking at all data to make sure that the culture and climate is improving. Also, he brings in curriculum partners when we work on our project-based learning, and so that is getting the community involved. Our parent involvement is up, we are re-establishing our PTO. Last year, we did not have a PTO. So when you talk about this position having a huge impact on leadership and learning, or on academics and the SEL piece, it does both. But the principal has to have the, the, the direction to expose everything about the school, and that is the SIP. That is the trend data, that is the benchmark data, that is the needs and wants and emotional part. So it really works on the full gamut to work it in the right direction.
Okay. There are, there's one, there's one tool that I know Valerie uses called Six Seconds that helps measure kids' emotional, kind of they call it their emotional IQ, maybe something you want to check out. It's self-reporting, so it's, you know, obviously, but it's still, it's been interesting as a parent to be able to see those reports.
We are currently working with LNL, and our SEL department is working with the support services department. Like we said before, one of our next steps is to align all of that for the coming year and try to get us all on the same page across the district. And they're trying to do the same thing across the country. Therefore, you're having these conferences and people coming, and we're moving in that direction to try to get all the services on the same page.
Thank you. I'm going to send you our outcomes and indicators.
Okay, great.
Ms. Berry?
Thank you. It's always good to hear about what we're doing in our Community Achieved schools. I was very appreciative about the boxes, food boxes that were delivered during the snow days. Do we have enough, did we have enough to take care of the needs of the community during those snow days?
We did. The first day that we handed out, which was that Thursday night before the snow hit on Friday, we had planned on giving food Thursday night and Friday morning, and we ran out of boxes. But we, transportation, school security, as food would get low at some sites, we would transfer around across the city, and so working with our partners, but we were finished at the end of the night. We handed everything out. And then our, with our last one, we had a little bit of food left over.
So nobody went hungry? Nobody was left with empty hands? Is that true?
I would like to think that, but I'm sure there were people that couldn't get there. And we've actually already been back together to look on the plan for next year. You know, let's know what sites we're going to be at next year, let's communicate that so everybody knows where we're going to be on the front end.
Okay. And I was real impressed with the fact that we've reduced suspensions from 43 to nine. That's per day, did you say?
Per month.
Per month.
And that's, it's that way in a lot of schools.
Okay. Okay, that sounds great. Do we offer third-party billing in our clinics?
So we don't have clinics now?
I realize we don't have clinics, but do we, we don't have any health services at all, even though we don't really have an official clinic?
So we have, we've got our external mental health provider that work with us, and they do bill. And then we, we have nurses, but most of the nurses are there to do just procedures.
Yeah. I know I've been talking about this for two and a half years. I'm trying to understand the difference between community schools and Community Achieves. And I've been to visit Cole Elementary, and we have five Community Achieved schools in my district, three. Two are in Madison, and we have anywhere between 85 and 95% poverty in all of our Madison schools. And we're all aware of the issues that we're having in reading across the state. So when I went to visit Pond Gap in Knoxville, Tennessee, they had 100 students involved five days a week from 3 till 6. And there were magnificent classes that were taught by different teachers than taught during the day. Many of them were from the university, from UT. And Monday and Wednesday, they had math and reading, and Thursday, Tuesday, and Thursday, they had art and crafts, and it was very organized, very well-organized, and... And then, at 6 o'clock, they all sat down and ate dinner together, 100 students and many parents. So, I'm wondering, do we, I know we don't have anything like that right now. Do we envision that for the future?
I would love for us to get to that. And I think working with our new director of extended learning, and, you know, Pond Gap, how long have they been? That's what I usually will remind myself. When I was in Cincinnati a couple of years ago, you know, they've been doing this 10 to 15 years. But yeah, we have to, it would be great if our school buildings could be open at night on the weekends in the summer.
Well, Dr. Chronic from Knoxville said he would be happy to come and help us get it off the ground.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Good. Thank you very much. Okay, going on. All right. Committee reports, Ms. Berry?
Yes. Our Teaching and Learning Committee met on January the 25th, and I want to thank the five board members who were there. Amy Frote, Will Pinkston, Joanne Brandon, Anna Shepherd, and myself. And we discussed reading proficiency with Tammy Lipsy. And also, principals Ricky Gibbs from Glenn Gary and Susan Cochran from Cockroll were there to answer board members' questions. We know that all learning rests on the shoulders of literacy. And literacy, of course, is the cornerstone of education. Tammy gave us a sneak preview of the state literacy plan that was rolled out last week. And this, she also serves on the state literacy committee. And the first thing they did was they wrote a common definition of reading, one that they could all buy into. And that's exactly what we did in our literacy, on our literacy committee with MNPS in 2012. Now, I sent a PowerPoint to everyone about, with Tammy's presentation, which included traits, habits, and qualities of a proficient reader. I'm not going to reiterate that now. I know that Sharon is happy to hear that. But I do want to give a couple of highlights. Students who do not read proficient, proficiently by third grade are four times less likely to graduate from high school than proficient readers. And of course, poverty compounds the problem. So, students who live in poverty are 13 times less likely to graduate than students than proficient readers. Candace McQueen visited 8,000 classrooms during her first year as commissioner. And she found that 63% of the literacy lessons focused on worksheets and isolated skills. Then, we wonder why our reading achievement is low. It did not focus on meaning and comprehension, which our definition of literacy in Metro says it rests on comprehension and meaning. During the 8,000 visits, Dr. McQueen found that oftentimes, appropriate texts were not being utilized. 57% of the texts were appropriate for the student's ability and process, but 43% were too difficult. And when, when we're presenting information and text that's too difficult for children to read that cannot progress, so we robbed them of opportunities to learn. Tammy concluded by sharing our goals in MNPS for literacy. Number one, we want to expand our comprehensive reading plan. We want to provide summer school in five of our priority schools, five or more, and utilize our highly-trained literacy experts. We plan to restructure RTI. And we also want to restructure the way our coaches, our literacy coaches are used. We want to improve and expand our bookrooms so that students will have enough materials that, that will work with a variety of levels. And then, we also, it's in the works and continuing to talk about a possible reading recovery training site at Lipscomb for the entire state. Our next committee meeting will be tomorrow at 11:30.
Thank you. Just briefly on Director Search Committee meeting, we did meet, I believe it was last week, to affirm our partnership, to move forward with the search. We have secured Jim Huey, and I believe that an email went out both on, two times on Sunday, reiterated by Ms. Bubba, and I thank you for that, to sign up for your one-on-one sessions with the recruiter. And so, if those times that are currently there don't work for you, please make them aware sooner than later, and we'll see what we can do to accommodate that. But your participation in the meeting and in this process are greatly, greatly appreciated. We don't have a Director Search Committee scheduled yet. We will schedule one-on-ones. All of the one-on-ones are complete. Okay?
All right. Thank you. Ms. Spears?
I know some people need to go vote.
Ms. Spears? I do. The Budget Finance Committee met this afternoon, and it's in preparation for our April 12th vote on the operating budget. We went ahead and just laid out a timeline of our meeting schedule that we will have posted by tomorrow. We've got a couple of dates to finalize. And Mr. Henson and I were just able to speak to the per-pupil approach that we're taking with this year's budget, that all of the departments are submitting requests based on the number of students that will be served and the cost per pupil. And then, also using that retroactively to, to talk about effectiveness of previous programs. So, I look forward to those discussions. And we will meet for sure March 8th at 3:30, if not a day next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shepherd, class?
On February the 11th, House Bill 1049, commonly referred to as a voucher, a voucher bill, was scheduled to be on the House floor for a vote. The sponsor of the bill instead tabled the bill for lack of enough votes to pass the bill. It can still be revived in this legislative session, but we're holding our collective breath in hopes that it doesn't rear its heavily head again. With out-of-state pro-voucher companies contributing heavily to campaigns of some of our state legislators, I've come to believe that this bill is more about campaign funding than pro-school or student choice. The annual class meeting was held on Monday, April 15th in advance of TSB Day on the Hill scheduled for Tuesday, April 16th. There were representatives from the four large school districts there. We reviewed at length the items that are pertinent to the larger districts in Tennessee, and I want to thank Hank Clay for being there with me. We spoke at length around, about the changes in the BEP funding formula. And while I do applaud Governor Haslam's commitment to putting more dollars in public education, I'm concerned that when we finally land on what this BEP funding looks like, that we will, MNPS might be a loser of some funds with the changes in the cost differential funding and the authorization fees for charter schools. So, I know that our CFO and interim director of schools, Chris Henson, is keeping a keen eye on both these issues, as, as am I.
Thank you. Announcements, Ms. Frote? Spears? Ms. Shepherd?
Okay. I had these prepared for the last meeting that got canceled, but I wanted to say kudos to all the students, faculty, and staff at McGawick High School. On Wednesday, January the 27th, Dr. Jill Biden, the second lady of the United States, and her staff paid a visit to McGawick High School. She brought with her her chief of staff, her education policy advisor, and the undersecretary of Education for the United States, Ted Mitchell. It was a real intimate day for the students, and they, they shined like the stars that they are. And I received a really nice note in the mail from a young lady named Sabrina McClure, a student at Whites Creek High School, thanking me for my service to our students. And I have not had the honor of meeting Sabrina McClure, but I wanted to publicly thank her for taking the time and effort to write a very nice thank-you note to me. It was very thoughtful, and I'm very appreciative. So, thank you, Sabrina. That's it.
Ms. Berry?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Candace McQueen launched her state, state's new literacy campaign this past week. It's called Read to Be Ready. And Dick Allington, who is a renowned expert in the field of reading, served on a panel with Dr. Vicky Risco, Professor Emeritus at Vanderbilt University. It feels like our district and the state are rowing in the same direction with literacy, and it's a very exciting time for me. You may notice, you may have noticed the construction that's going on in front of our building. I think this is the front. Sometimes I'm confused, actually, which is the front, the new front. And that is going to be the home, the future home of our wellness center. And it will help our employees to stay fit and healthy. It's going to be 26,000 square feet, and it will feature eight exam rooms in the medical center. It will provide not only primary care, but physical therapy, chiropractic care, health coaching, counseling, pharmacy, a walking track, exercise equipment, and group classes for people like Mary and Taese and Sharon and I. So, they will also have locker rooms, meeting spaces, and a healthy food cafe. Our five employee healthcare centers have been so successful across Metro schools that we are using the savings generated from those employee health centers to pay for our brand-new wellness center. Dr. Brandon and I serve on the insurance trust, and this is a dream of ours that is coming to fruition. I also want to say congratulations to David Hines, who, and the people who work in the Employee Benefit Services, because the department was named as a finalist for an award for their outstanding work in managing and improving our employee health, our employees' health. When teachers are healthy and they come to school with vitality, kids progress quicker. So, we appreciate David and his staff for their good work. Hunter's Lane has been offering free tutoring for about the last six weeks in English and math, and that continues. Also, a team of Hunter's Lane teachers presented at the annual Title I Conference in Houston, Texas. Yay, Warriors! Our next Teaching and Learning Committee meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, February the 24th at 11:30 in the board conference room. And we're going to follow the lead of the Director Search Advisory Committee, which has completed a study on comparing the director salaries across large urban districts. And we're going to use those very same school districts to look at teacher compensation. Hope to see you all tomorrow.
Ms. Hunter?
Yes, I would like to invite everyone out to Southeast Community Meeting on March 10th to learn about what's happening in our schools. Thank you.
And I'd just like to take an opportunity to congratulate Dr. James Bailey, who was